I'd like to call to order the December 4th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. In front of you, you have the minutes from our November 20th meeting. And when you've had a chance to take a look at them, if I could get someone to make a motion to approve those minutes. Hazel, second. Katrina, all those in favor? It's unanimous? All right. Moving on, you have the agenda for this evening's meeting in front of you. If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Brendan, second. Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each subject, to each speaker, and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. The first item is our Next Generation Science Standards with Ms. Melinda Meyer.
Good evening, everyone. As Melinda is setting up, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Melinda Meyer, our K-8 Science Coordinator. So this evening, Melinda will be giving you an update on the Next Generation Science Standards and walking you through a story of how we came about with our implementation. So the research that went into understanding what the standards were asking our students to know and be able to do, the professional development that teachers took place, and certainly the curriculum writing. And so we're hoping to give you a good understanding of the process that we followed so that you have a good understanding of how we go about framing all of our curriculum. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Melinda. And I know you have some people here tonight.
I do. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for providing the opportunity to share with the New Canaan Board of Education and the community the journey and the story of the Science Department's transition to the Next Generation Science Standards, and we like to refer to them as the NGSS. It is truly a representative, it is truly a presentation of our journey. And to that end, you will be viewing tonight a collection of narratives and pictures from members of our science family, as well as our Curriculum Leadership Council. We are fortunate tonight to also have many of them present. I would like to introduce you to the members who are in the audience tonight. And we have, if you can give a wave, Laura Potamani. She's a grade six science teacher. Zoe Robinson, she's the K-8 mathematics coordinator. We have Sarah Bros, and she's the 5'8" ELA coordinator. Mary Hannah, the K-8 social studies coordinator. Joanne Schulman, the K-4 reading coordinator. And Karen Skowzo, the K-5 writing coordinator. And in the front row, we have Jonathan Adams, who's a health and phys ed coordinator. The curriculum development process is a complex weaving of research, development, products, and narratives. The pieces are in constant motion, are interconnected. Tonight's presentation will take you through each phase of the process. You'll notice that there are three boxes up on the screen, and the first box, the developmental phase, is grounded in research and adult learning and the writing process. And then it cycles into the feedback cycle where we have, that provides us with opportunities for critical friends to provide us with questions or wonderings about our work. And they are comprised of teams that are outside of the actual creation team, and they have an area of expertise and brings a different lens to the look at the work. And the next few slides, we're going to look at the product and outcome portion of the transition to the NGSS. And that's really the heart, that's really the student that we're looking at, and how do teachers transition their instruction and their performance and assessment in order to capture the essence of the NGSS within the student. The NGSS is a three-dimensional approach to science education. There are three distinct and equally important dimensions to learning science. These dimensions are combined to form each standard or performance expectation, and each dimension works with the other two to help students build a cohesive understanding of science over time. The science and engineering practices, those represented by the color blue, describe what scientists do to investigate the natural world and what engineers do to design and build systems. The practices better explain and extend what is meant by inquiry in science and the range of cognitive, social, and physical practices that it requires. Students engage in practices to build, deepen, and apply their knowledge of core ideas and cross-cutting concepts. The cross-cutting concepts are outlined in green, and they help students explore connections across the four domains of science. When these concepts, such as cause and effect, are made explicit for students, they can help students develop a coherent and scientifically-based view of the world around them. And the disciplinary core ideas, these are the content standards, and they're represented by the color orange. They're the key ideas in science that have a broad importance within and across the multiple sciences or engineering disciplines. These core ideas build on each other as students progress through grade levels and are grouped into the following four domains: physical science, life science, earth and space sciences, and the engineering. When we create our learning objectives and when we write the curriculum and assessments, you will find us using these three colors. We have different color markers, we use different color fonts, and that ensures that we are including all three dimensions in every aspect of our instruction, and it is reflecting the intention of the NGSS. And this is a great example of showing you how we use those three colors to represent those three dimensions in the Next Generation Science Standards. So we've created a slide to show you a little bit about the difference about how the previous Connecticut standards is different from the current NGSS standards. So if you look at the first example, you'll see that our students in grade three, actually, have just engaged in this unit that's addressing the idea of planning and conducting investigation to provide evidence of the effects of balanced and unbalanced forces on the motion of objects. So in grade three, our students designed a cart, and that cart was able to move on its own either with a balance or a visible or invisible force. So sometimes students might use magnets or static electricity as an invisible force, or they might use a force like a push or a pull in order to start the motion of that object. So in this design, in our new unit, in our new kit, the students put together this cart that meets certain criteria. In these old standards, you'll see the concept is there, but how we're asking students to demonstrate that understanding is really through a description. So they might look at something and then write or orally describe the strength of the pushes or the pulls of an object. There are also some key instructional shifts that are taking place, and these are along the, these are in the use of modeling, the emphasis on discourse or science talk, and the incorporation of phenomenon. In each of the following slides, we will see examples of our teachers talking about these shifts and the impact that it has on their practice. In this film, you're going to hear from Laura Potamani, who's the grade six science teacher present in the audience, and she's going to explain modeling and how she uses it in her class.
One of the three dimensions of the NGSS is science and engineering practices. In this video clip, you will see students developing and using scientific models. They are also engaged in argument using evidence. I really enjoy using modeling in my classroom. It promotes student collaboration. On their posters, you can see that they are showing their thinking, sharing their ideas through diagrams, drawings, and analogies. It can be very messy. It's not art or a formal poster project. Modeling allows students to grapple with phenomena, to be engaged with challenging topics. It also helps them develop a higher level of understanding.
So in addition to modeling, we also have an instructional shift in the use of something called a phenomenon. And so our next example is Allison Ford, who is a grade eight science teacher, and she's going to talk to us a little bit about how she uses phenomenon to generate questions that then drives the plan for her instruction and assessment.
This year, we started implementing the NGSS curriculum with our life science unit. The biggest shift that I've noticed with this move towards NGSS has to do with the use of engaging phenomenon. Phenomenon are concepts or ideas that we present the students with at the start of the unit that are meant to engage them in the content as well as get the students asking questions. One way you can see that I've started using this in my room is what I call the wondering wall, which is behind me. The chapter that we're currently working on has to do with genetics. So at the start of the chapter, I showed students a video about disease called Tay-Sachs disease. Watching the video and learning a little bit about it started the students asking tons of questions about how the disease is passed from parents to children, and why certain siblings have it but others don't. They had tons of questions. The great thing about these questions is they're informing me about what kind of background knowledge students have, so they're able to drive my instruction. So ideally, all the questions that they ask in the beginning of the chapter, they will themselves be able to answer at the end of the chapter after they've learned all they can learn about genetics.
So there are many different ways that we introduce phenomenon to our students, and some of them are engaging photos, some can be quotes, and some are videos like we just heard Allison describe. And I'm going to share another approach to using phenomenon in our new aligned grade one unit on adaptations. So if we take a look at the standard performance expectation for this grade one unit that is just about to start, actually, there's some teachers that were so eager, they started about a week early. And it's called, the performance expectation reads, "Use materials to design a solution to a human problem by mimicking how plants and our animals use external parts to help them survive, grow, and meet their needs." So when we looked at that as educators, we were grappling with what could be an engaging phenomenon that we could use with students, and we went to a children's story. And that was a phenomenon that we chose to use. And within the children's story, there are three students who are walking to school, and one's sharing with the other two that they're going on a vacation with their grandfather. And they're trying to, and they are going to a desert. And so all the children in the group are talking about the different animals that you might find in a desert, and the animal of a camel comes up. And in the book, they say, "Look at those feet. I bet they have those thick hooves to keep their feet from getting hot as they walk. You better start thinking about what you're going to wear on your feet, Susie." And so suddenly now, the students in your class are thinking about, oh, that's right, like, how do animals function in these different environments where you have some extreme different conditions? And so we realized that this could be our engaging phenomenon because all of our students think about what's on their feet and how in different environments, they wear different shoes. So they might wear tennis shoes, or basketball shoes, or cleats when they're running on the baseball field. So these are called related phenomenon, and those are things that kids can hook into. So whether or not they knew about camels, they know about the best shoe to wear during basketball practice. So once we have the engaging phenomenon, then we think about, well, how are, what are the performance tasks that are going to be involved in this? So we have a kit that arrived, and inside were these canvas shoes. And so then it all came together, and we realized that the task that we were going to give our students at the end of the unit was to design the dream shoe for the environment that they were assigned. They're going to use what they learned in the module to help you design the ideal shoe for the adventure. Think about what you'll be doing on your trip. Will you be climbing? Will you get wet? How will you design, how will your design help you the most to get the most out of your visit and keep you safe? Think about the adaptations of the plants and animals in this area. Use clues from their adaptations to help you design the ultimate travel shoe. So in their design and understanding what they will be doing, they might look at animals and weatherproofing. So if you're going to be going into a rainforest environment and you're going to be kayaking, what are some of the ways that the animals and plants have weatherproofed themselves? How might you weatherproof your shoe? And the students will actually design on their canvas shoe this performance task and test it. We will spray water on it. We will make it a gritty, sandy environment that you have to walk through. So that's an example of how we can use phenomenon, link back the performance task to the phenomenon, and then all the learning pieces that go in, along the way are engaged in identifying what plants and animals are in these different environments, how are they adapted to live So so far, we talked a little bit about the student learning and the performances and assessments that would take place. But how do we get there? And so we're going to focus now on the development process. And this development process started back in 2012. And we're going to talk a little bit about the different professional readings, the professional learning, and the actual curriculum writing. This is the timeline that we took since 2012, and you'll notice that we are purposeful in this planning. We were able to group together common professional learning experiences in order to set us up for this transition when the state finally adopted it in 2015. So you might notice that in 2013, we focused on scientific and engineering practices, that's represented by the CEP. Then in 2013 and 14, we really focused a lot on STEM professional learning in both the elementary school and the middle school as we implemented the STEM programs. In 2016, we started the writing process, and now currently, we're in the implementation stage of the first units of our NGSS in most of the grade levels. So how did we, how were we able to do all of this in five years? Well, before we even start to write a unit, we do something called a curriculum topic study. And this is a prescribed protocol that engages the educator deeply in understanding the science content of the standards, as well as how students think or learn about the specific content. This is an individual process in a collaborative environment. So teachers are using Google Docs to raise questions or respond to prompts around potential student misconceptions, or how to tackle questions such as a level of abstraction. And what that means is our new unit in grade seven is around atoms and the periodic table. So those are very abstract concepts. So how do we make the unseen atom seen to our students? And what does that mean? What are the different learning experiences? And what are the resources that we might need with the simulations or models or kits in order, that we might need in order to bring that real to students? And science teachers from grades seven through 12 have certification in specific content areas. So they might be certified in 712 bio, 712 earth science, or even a 712 general science certificate. Teachers K-6 are elementary certified. So through the topic studies, teachers are going to identify areas that they need to learn more about because it might not be under the specialty certification that they have, or it might be in a while since they've taught that subject area. So they will engage in content professional learning, and they can do it in multiple ways. They might do in district activities, such as Project Lead the Way training in grades one, two, and three. They might attend different workshops, like you'll see Teri Rendy and Kristin Veach went to a STEM workshop to learn a little bit more about how girls engage in the STEM professions. We have partnerships with universities. We use informal education sites like the Sackler Institute of Comparative Genetics. Teachers will go to institutional workshops, such as Anna Loper, who went to a climate change workshop. And then we have non-traditional trainings that might take place, such as Alicia Collins and myself and Carrie Barnum, who all chose to go back into the field to learn a little bit more about the changing earth and what it means for our students. So Alicia Collins is grade six, and she's going to share with us a little bit more about her experience of how she used a grant to learn about the earth's constructive and destructive forces and bring that into her classroom.
I knew when I got the grant to go to Iceland that it was going to be a life-changing experience. I knew I was going to learn a ton of things about Iceland, and I was going to be able to bring a lot of information back to my classroom. What I didn't know at the time was how many connections I was going to see between our energy unit and our life science unit, our earth science unit, and how I was going to be able to engage the students and really start to unpack the NGSS. This year, as I started to think about how I wanted to sort of intertwine Iceland into what I was teaching, I was thinking about what are the things that are going to stand out to the students? What can I get them thinking about? What kinds of questions do they have? And so I took, I began their unit by giving them some sort of phenomenon, using some of those Iceland pictures to sort of get their brains thinking, and had them come up with some things, some things that they were seeing, some things that they were wondering, and used those questions to drive my instruction throughout the entire unit.
We also engage in pedagogical professional learning. Science educators, what that means is we actually get developed in how we approach instruction and how students learn. That's what that term would mean. And we also do this in a variety of ways and experiences. They include in district workshops, such as Project Lead the Way. They also include external workshops, such as the Next Generation Science Standards NGSX training. Connecticut has an online short course that they offer teachers to get up to, to learn a little bit more about the NGSS and the implications it has on instruction. There are Twitter feeds that we follow on Wednesday nights that educators across the country engage in. There are many other states in addition to ours that have begun this process, some of them even earlier than we have, and there's a lot to learn from our colleagues across the country. And we also have a large amount of book resources, and we have them in multiple platforms. So we have them electronically, we have them as ebooks, and we have hard copies so that you, as an educator, can engage in this learning whenever, at your readiness time, at your readiness level, and in whatever style meets your needs the best. And Ashley Walsh is our grade seven science teacher, and she's going to share with us her recent experience at the Connecticut Science State Conference on a Saturday in November.
So the NGSS standards really focus on three main parts. So basically, content information, different science and engineering practices, and cross-cutting concepts. And at the conference, I was able to learn a bunch of ways to integrate cross-cutting concepts into the curriculum in a way that makes it very clear for the students and also clear for me as I'm planning. And so I'm really excited to use that information and start planning my next life science unit. Thanks.
Another professional learning platform we use is Google Docs to engage as a department in a tech study. So this document was used as a virtual department meeting. This particular one was used in October, and we're going to read Chapter Two together this coming November virtually. And it provides an environment for teachers to individually reflect and connect to their learning and respond to each other in a collaborative environment. And again, teachers have on-demand access to this education. You'll see them engaging in this, these documents and these learning experiences 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, whenever they're able to be, put the time in to think about it, but then also to respond to it. When we're comfortable with the content and the best approach to having students access the materials, we start the curriculum writing process. We use a template that was designed by the Curriculum Leadership Council to keep it cohesive and consistent across grade levels. And that's really important at the elementary level where teachers are looking at curriculum documents from multiple curricular areas, so social studies, ELA, math, science. And when they're trying to find what are the essential questions, or what students should know or be able to do, it's important that we have documents that look the same so that this information is easy for them to find. And the structure of the document is a roadmap to plan and design instruction, and you will see, not in this example, but when you look at our other examples, that we use the three-dimensional colors throughout this document, again, to make sure we're embedding and incorporating those ideas into the development. And the next page, the next section that we're going to talk about is the feedback cycle. And this is a really unique and an important piece of the curriculum writing process. And again, it's performed by individuals not involved in the direct writing of that unit itself. And that brings about an expert lens to the work and raises questions that we may not have considered as a writing team. We have a couple of different feedback, critical friends groups, and one of them is the actual science department themselves. And the grade-level science teams will bring to each other, the UBD units, for the department feedback. And these are critical friends that will provide insight into content questions, alignment, and vertical connections. And we use a process called the tuning protocol to facilitate this work. Some of you may know Scott Chard. He is a grade eight science teacher who's been teaching in the district for over 20 years, and he's going to share a little bit more about the peer review and feedback cycle of the tuning process. Sometimes in the science department, we call this a fishbowl. So he's going to use a fishing analogy, and that's where that comes about.
The fishbowl is a way for colleagues to share information and work in a collaborative and trusting environment. This takes time, and Melinda Meyer has fostered this collegiality so we can work across grade levels effectively. In the fishbowl, we are a group of fishermen and fisherwomen who are learning how to fish better. We share work, ideas, techniques, as we adapt to the new NGSS standards. Using this grade-level cross-cutting approach allows teachers to grasp what is happening in each grade level and gives us an overall scope and sequence of the scientific principles we are to facilitate in our work with the students. Through collaboration, we can probe and question our colleagues about their work without fear and in a friendly environment. We follow a protocol that helps move the process along in a non-threatening way. I have gathered great ideas from these fishbowls, and I hope others have found some of my ideas interesting and useful.
We also have another critical friend group, and that's the Curriculum Leadership Council. And they are, they provide feedback on the structure and alignment of the UBD units and the interdisciplinary connection to their own units. We also use different protocols to facilitate these discussions. And you're going to watch a video clip from Evan Remley, who is the high school English department chair, Anthony Blas, who is the high school mathematics chair, Zoe Robinson, the K-8 mathematics coordinator, and Karen Skowzo, the K-5 writing coordinators. And each of them will share their perspective of curriculum writing and the CLC.
Oh, hello. I'm Evan Remley. I bet you would like to know a little bit about our curriculum process. I'm glad you asked. Curriculum is the core of all student learning, specifically student learning needs in the 21st century. Here at NCHS, that is the focus of all that we do. And then it cycles through to the idea of innovation and professional learning on the faculty side, which then circles through to adjustments in feedback. This comes through many forms: student, peer, professional learning, professional learning, our central curriculum leadership council, and this then brings us back to assessments and outcomes, the measurement of student learning. And then we cycle back to student learning needs in the 21st century. One of the things we're most proud of here at NCHS is that we have been the forefront of most of the curricular innovations of the last 20 years. When the Common Core came to us about seven years ago, we already had many of those strands in place because we viewed it as best practice and found ways to implement it. When other districts went to portfolio assessments, we've been doing them since 1995. We're very proud of the work we do.
Hello. Just a quick thought on the work that the Curriculum Leadership Committee does. Basically allows our curricula to be living, breathing documents. When changes need to be made, either because of the updating of standards or the creation of a new course, we come together and look over the work that's been performed, and we ask pretty detailed questions to ensure that the work done both meets the standards and better serves our students, which at the end of the day is the most important thing. So I look forward to continuing to do that work.
The Curriculum Leadership Council offers us a great opportunity to serve as critical friends to one another when looking at new units of study or updates to curriculum documents. We ask each other questions that let us reflect upon research-based approaches and ways to move student thinking forward. It's also a great way to ground ourselves back into the research of the content and resources we've selected for students and be able to have discussions with one another to ensure student success. It's a valuable opportunity that allows us to grow from one another and also reflect on our own practices.
So we often get asked what program we're using for language arts, and we always kind of laugh because we don't actually use a program. We've written our own curriculum. We've looked at best practices, we've looked at the standards, we've thought about what would meet the needs of our students so that we could design curriculum with rigor and relevance. So you might be wondering why, once we've written it, we are constantly doing summer work. Well, a writer's work is never done. We are constantly revising our units. It might be because of the order. Sometimes we work on the alignment between reading and writing. A few years ago, we matched up some of our units so that they would be side by side. Sometimes we have a new unit that has implications for other grades. Sometimes we're looking at student work. We want to make sure that the work is spiraling and building across the grades. So we also look at the end-unit assessments. If we're not getting the desired results, we know that we need to change things up. So to sort of sum it up, curriculum, curriculum work is never done, it just keeps getting
Over the past five years, we've been building up resources, establishing contacts, and developing communication platforms to connect with the parents and the community. So some of these are listed on the slide. I'm going to go into a couple of more details and review the bullets. So we've been using the district website to share with parents the newly-aligned NGSS units, and teachers have started to use the NGSS language with parents during daytime open houses and back-to-school nights. We love parent volunteers, and we had a series of parents come this past month to SACs to help us get ready for the robotics unit and get it up and running for us, which we're about to start next Monday. We use the beautiful resources and the accommodating staff at the New Canaan Nature Center as just one of the many extension and enrichment programs that we have. The department has, over the past, I want to say probably four or five years, compiled a database of over 60 STEM professionals that reside in the New Canaan community, and we have used them over the years for different presentations, internships, and even sharks in our new STEM workshop Shark Tank. And this is similar to the show Shark Tank, where students design original products and to solve authentic problems and then present to a panel. solve authentic problems and then present to a panel of community members known as the Sharks, and they provide feedback to our students. So we welcome any of you to join our Sharks panels as Sharks as well. We have partnered with town employees, such as Tiger Man, and even the construction crew at SACS during the construction project, to talk to our students a little bit more about the engineering components. And we rely on the local businesses and organizations, even the Board of Ed, to be our authentic audiences for different projects, such as the Watership Project in Grade Six, known as the SWAT Project. So there are multiple ways that parents and the community have been engaged with our work in our program. And this is probably our favorite phase of the transition implementation process. And this is actually the implementation of the NGSS and the impact that will have on our students. So we are now bringing the students into our design process. And we are looking, our next stage of work is looking at their work. So how are they engaging with the next-generation science standards and the curriculum that we have developed? What types of phenomena are they talking about and bringing up to us? And how might we be able to actually embed their ideas into the curriculum process? We're going to continue to transition our remaining units to the NGSS, and we're looking to have most of them fully implemented by the end of next year. And we will continue to collaborate with the high school to ensure a smooth transition between the middle school and the high school and the work with the NGSS. We're going to examine the supporting materials and resources that can help support the building and the construction of the curriculum for our new units, and update and extend our communication platforms to keep our community informed of the units and the students who are engaged with them. We will also continue to be involved at the regional, state, and national level to stay current in the practices and be active participants in the change decisions. So when I look at this last slide, which brings us back to the beginning of the different phases and how we're constantly weaving in, is not linear. In development, we do multiple feedback cycles. You heard me mention now that during the product stage, we look at student work, which is also part of the feedback cycle. But in the middle, I wish I had added a heart, which is for our students, because those are really truly at the center of our curriculum design. So I'd like to thank, again, the science department for contributing so much to the story, as well as the Curriculum Leadership Council. And I'd like to welcome any questions that you have.
Thanks, Melinda. That's great. So let me open it up to the board. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Meyer? Maria?
Are there any standards that we don't, what are the standards we don't cover anymore? And are there any, did we adopt it, you know, 100%?
The state of Connecticut adopted the NGSS as a whole. So during their adoption process, they crosswalked to see what were some standards that we used to teach and what are some standards now that might be new or are similar or different. And what the conclusion is, is that many of the concepts that we have taught in the past, like the one you saw in the initial slide of like what was old and what was new, is there, but the instructional approach is what's different, and so the outcome will be different. So students are now thinking about, like, what is it, like, how am I going to use this information to answer this question or this problem? So in the K-8 area, I'm trying to think offhand, I can get the information, we do have the crosswalk of what's still there and what has changed.
And regarding grading, I remember, I know a lot of this requires self-directed students. Do you find that it's not good for some students, say quieter students who maybe aren't taking initiative? Because it looks like it's a lot of hands-on group work. Is that right?
It is a lot of hands-on group work. And I think part of the process that the teachers have gone through is how do we support all the students in that engagement? And so what are some of the different learning strategies in order to say to a student, you might have this concept, but let's go a little bit deeper with it? And so what are the instructional moves that we make to encourage them and then to monitor the depth that they're going into that understanding? So that's really pushing our students to go deeper on one end, and then how are the different ways that we can support the students and have their voices heard at the other end of the spectrum, too?
Jen?
So first of all, thank you to all of you. You know, I've seen kind of the program growing, just because I have a senior in high school and then I have a seventh grader. And some of them are very science-minded and some may not have the same interests, but the fun that they have in these classes and the things that they're learning is really, really great. So it makes it really exciting. And we just did, when we did a tour in the eighth grade, the new wing, and seeing that robotics, like seeing all the stuff, and the kids are so excited. So it's really, really great. So I just have two questions. I know, and I know about the, just talking about the grading in like the science realm in the sixth grade, you know how you do like that level grading? Is that going to remain that way? I mean, I know it's been that way for a while, and I think there was talk of maybe going into other subjects besides science.
So tonight, we're just focusing in on the next-generation science standards.
Got it.
And there is another district goal that relates to standard-based grading. So right now, we're in the process of doing the analysis, and we'll look forward to coming back to the board in the springtime to really talk more deeply about standard-based grading. If I let Melinda go on standard-based grading right now, we could be here for another couple hours.
Got it.
But I do think it's important for her to come back after we do the analysis and have the conversation. I know it was raised. I know it was part of the district goals, and we want to be able to give you great details about that and what it entails and where we're going for the future.
Perfect. So one other thing, and this might be irrelevant also, but like, so I noticed that there's another class at the high school, the Honors Earth. Is that on par with this topic as well, or am I going off?
Keep going with the question, and we'll sit.
Well, so I'm just wondering, because I know that there's a lot of confusion, I think, when freshmen come in, like with the track with biology versus science. And I've noticed that this year, last year, now, there's like this new Honors Earth Science. Is that?
I can briefly speak to it. Yeah, the Honors Earth Science has been there for as long as I'm aware.
Okay.
Enrollment does fluctuate year to year. And it is that the sequencing of courses in the high school is also a part of the next-generation science standards conversation. And when Melinda talks about that alignment from the K-8 up into the high school, that's part of the discussion that we're learning about and planning for. So we're figuring that out.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thanks.
Maria? That actually reminded me of something. Going from eighth grade to ninth grade, depending on whether you go into earth science or bio, I remember there was some connection to the seventh-grade map test. Is there any connection? Does that factor into placement for ninth grade, or am I wrong about that? The scores on the NWEA?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would want to speak directly to the Science Department Chair at the high school.
That I go back to what they're using for their criteria for their classes and part of their process that, so let me just look into that, and I can get that updated to you in one of the Friday notes.
Other questions? Hazel?
This is meant to be also a pat on the back to all of you. One thing that I've seen over the years grow is definitely the science presentations that are done in February, when there doesn't seem to be anything but ice and snow. But there's an excitement to go into these rooms where the kids have been working on their projects, and it brings families together to work with them. And do you have any other plans for similar-type activities, or is that part of the classroom pack which is happening?
I think as we're continuing to grow some of these performance assessments that we're asking students to do with the next generation, there's going to be multiple opportunities for the students to reach out into the community. So what those might look like, I mean, they might be small groups of parents, like the Shark Tank that they perform in front of, or there might be a larger venue like this tech or the STEM night that you're referring to in February. So we're very excited by all the possibilities and opportunities that are upcoming for us.
I have one other thing to add to it. This is an informal evaluation. It is not, would not be part of your science programs. But when we meet with the freshmen, when they're in college in December, there has been a growing number of them interested in science and electing to have science courses and to major in science. That's unofficial, but that's what we've seen when we've spoken to them and met with them. So this may be a whole part of this. Somebody can measure that, figure out whether or not it is or not. I think I want to believe it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Penny?
Thank you for the very thorough explanation of what is clearly a robust process to develop the curriculum. One thing I was wondering is with respect to big data, because it cuts across a lot of these scientific areas that are included, the physical sciences, the earth and science, moons, and all the ones you said. How is it, are there goals within these next-generation science standards about where we want students to be by the eighth grade in terms of sort of understanding data sets and how do we analyze them and where to get, you know, where to find data and things like that?
So there's two main documents that we use. One is actually called the K-12 Framework for Science Education, and that's the framework document that the NGSS or the next-generation science standard was built against. And within that document, that framework document, for every standard, for every practice, for every cross-cutting concept, there are learning progressions, and they band them K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And then the NGSS has appendices that also show the learning continuum across those same grade bands for every concept and cross-cutting concepts and scientific engineering practice. And there are, so within there, those are built around some of the ideas of big data comes out, come out. And then also within the practices, the mathematical, there's a mathematical practice that evolves around looking at data analysis. So they go a little bit into what you should expect students to be able to do at the end of each of those grade bands. But a really good example of how we can use big data sets, even with our younger students, is with some different platforms that are out there, like Project Journey North, where they, it's places that students and scientists enter in data, and you get huge amounts of data, and you look at patterns of change over time. So for instance, we East School planted tulips, and tulips is one of the categories that you can watch change. So as the tulip first emerges from the ground, you enter in that date, and everyone across the country is entering in that date. So when you look at the map, you see all of a sudden the map begin to fill up with tulips, and you can see how it's moving across the north, across the country. And then it actually doesn't go across a certain band north. And so you start to raise those questions of like, why isn't there any data up here? And you get to learn like what, you know, some of the parameters around where certain living organisms live. You can do the same thing for monarch butterflies, and a lot of, so you do plants and animals. And the power of it is around the amount of data that's being used. So as we're going into topics, we're looking at large data sets, and what does that mean around a scientific concept like climate change? That's where you really can dig deep at that work with students. So you can do big data even with younger generations.
Great.
Anyone else? Maria?
I know we are usually ahead of the curve. Is there anyone who's, might be seeking to use the curriculum that we're developing? Or is the state coming to us? I know they do.
So we have, we have attended a lot of different workshops across the state. The state encourages us to attend certain workshops. So they have said that they're not actually going to come out with a state curriculum, but they said as a power of us in the state, we can design units together or share units. So there are work called, it's called CUDI. It's C-U-D-I, and so those are curriculum unit development initiatives. So that's a workshop that we build, we can build curriculum in and then share among each other. So sometimes those are like basic fee-based workshops that we can go to. But then we have our state organizations, like the Connecticut Science Teachers Association and the Connecticut Science Supervisor Association, where they have trained NGSS people who will vet out units that people are submitting to them, and then you can take and use and adapt to make it your own for your district. So there's a lot in the area nationally you asked about. So there are certain states that we will go to who have been implementing NGSS for a while. So California is one of them, Kentucky is one of them, Oregon, Washington. And so they have, even on their own state websites, resources that we can access in order to take a look at what their approach might be or what engaging phenomenon might they have used, because sometimes those aren't the easiest things for us to come up with. What we think is engaging as an adult isn't always engaging to a 12-year-old. So they have more tried and true resources for us.
Are there not as many textbooks for the NGSS as there were for Common Core? I mean, are there programs you can just buy?
It's tough sometimes to vet out those products, to know exactly, are you, they might say that they're three-dimensional, but when you really dig at it and you're trying to find each of those different colors, sometimes they have two or the three, or sometimes they have all three. But we do use, so we're very critical of the resources we select. The grade three unit that I just mentioned is a FOSS unit. We've used FOSS all along in the old standards, and we looked at their new NGSS modules, and we selected FOSS for that particular unit that we had written and saw that there was a close alignment. But another one, they didn't have an alignment to, so we didn't select that one. So that's the stage that we're looking at, Project Lead the Way. We use them in our grade one with the shoe that I described. But we didn't use them for a different one. So it's important that you build a curriculum in-house. You have the strength of the three dimension written into it, and then you find the resources that will support the instruction for it.
Anyone else?
I just have one question, but I wanted to start and say, you know, I know you educators like to use acronyms to a fault. Maybe talk to somebody when they use CUDI next time. Actually, I just wanted to ask you, I was really impressed with the number of faculty who were, you know, taking time to get grants, to do these amazing experiences that are really going to benefit our kids. And I wanted to get a little more insight into how you find out about these grants, you know, you as a department leader, do you, you know, bring things to people's attention? I think as a parent and as a board, I want to encourage us to do more of that. And then I guess the second part of that question is, are we, do we have enough resources as we head into budget season to provide these kind of experiences for staff at a district level as well? Because this is a priority of the district. It's a priority as we head into, you know, sort of what these students are wanting to prepare them for the jobs of the future. So if you could just kind of address those two things, that'd be great.
There's a couple of different ways that we go about finding different professional development experiences that will support what we need to learn more about. So some of it comes about during that topic study. For example, right now, the eighth grade was taking a look at an upcoming unit that they were revising, and they have a whole standard on electromagnetism. And they're like, we don't know, it's been a while since we have done, learned about electromagnetism, we need to figure that out. So they let me know, and then I go out into our community, our science community, and I start at the state level, and I put it out to our different organizations and say, hey, here's what we're looking for. Has anyone had anyone? And usually, when I put out a call like that, they direct me to university, locally universities. So there might be someone at Yale, there might be someone even at NCC, depending on what it might be, who could come and do professional learning and content. Sometimes it's not someone that we have locally that can give us that support. So that's when we sometimes look externally. So Connecticut's past has been very volatile with earth, with the constructive and destructive forces. So we have had volcano eruptions, and we have had lava flows, and we have had plates that have split apart and have come to get back together. But where do we really know that that's happening now? And so those teachers can search out areas that they can go and dive into the content and experience it for themselves to bring it back into the classroom. We also take approaches where we might say, all right, pedagogically, we need to grow to see how we can instruct for NGSS and how we can support student learning of that. And typically, sometimes I will go out to a workshop and vet it, and then come back and say, this is a great workshop. We want to make sure we send people there. Or if it's worth it, we did at the high school this past November, PL Day, we brought in the facilitator to do the science department. So we can handle it that way as well. But sometimes when you're going to spend a large expense of PL funds, we want to make sure that's going to be the best PL that we can provide. Regarding the resources, we have tried to look at a long-term plan for the implementation of this. And as part of the budget process is to kind of look at that three-year plan and how will you go about supporting the curriculum you're writing with the instructional materials that you need. So we've been working towards that, and sometimes we shifted a little bit some of the funds in order to support some of the new programs that we were able to get up and running this year, kind of ahead of our schedule, and then put into next year's budget the remaining items so that we can support the curriculum that's being written for that.
So what you'll see in the district budget is the line in STEM. So when we first started STEM, that was a large instructional supply line because we needed to get as many kits and robotics. And now we're at a place where it's coming down and it's more. and robotics. And now we're at a place where it's coming down and it's more replacement, and we're seeing a shift coming over into the science to purchase the kits to make those canvas shoes or to purchase other materials. So next year, you'll see us requesting money to move forward with second grade and fourth grade. And so you'll see that instructional supply unit in science going up, and we'll talk more about that at the budget workshop.
And to build on that, we also, after that, after we do the initial startup, oftentimes the kits are normal consumables that we normally could sustain in the budget. So you have a startup cost, and then that cost drops to sustain at the building level in, in the upcoming years.
Thank you. That was great. Well, we appreciate all the work that you're doing. So thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
You guys are all so supportive of each other. I love it. All right. And moving on to another curriculum update, we have, program, sorry. And we have Jonathan Adams here with, for the health program update.
So last year, Jonathan and Jay Egan came in front of the board and gave us an overview of our health curriculum in grades five through 12. And you'll remember that we talked a lot about skills and concepts, and we talked a little bit about our gap areas and where we need to go in regards to those gap areas, and that was really looking closely at the elementary curriculum. And certainly, we went back and looked at standards, and our real purpose of this evening is more of an update. So we want to be able to let you know where we are, what we've done since the beginning of the school year, and the research that we've engaged in. So those of you that have been on the board for quite some time will remember that we used to do these updates for science. And we would just come back and we'd just continually keep you updated as far as where we are, what we're doing in our research, how we're gathering information, what we're thinking and moving towards. You're part of our feedback loop, so this is part of that update this evening. And then we'll kind of head off, get some more work done, and then come back and, and give you another update. So I'm going to introduce Jonathan Adams.
Thank you very much, Jill. Just as she said as well, too, I'm very much grateful to be here to kind of present to you a, a brief update of the work that we've been able to accomplish thus far, thus far since last year. Before I begin, though, I do want to express just some gratitude and thanks, and for acknowledging us publicly, some other individuals that are in the room as well. So first, I, I would definitely like to thank Dr. Letzey, Dr. Corente, and Dr. Cass as well, just for, and the Board of Education, just for giving me the opportunity to work in the capacity that I am this year. I'd like to thank also some members that are in, in attendance that have also been in ongoing support for me. So Steve Bedard is here, Assistant Principal at Saks. Dave Gussich is here as well, too, Assistant Principal at the high school. And Jay Egan is here as well, too, our Wellness Coordinator and Athletic Director. And on top of that, too, we have two of our health teachers that are here as well. So you met or you know of as well, too, Christine Orlando, Saks Health Teacher. And then we've also had the privilege of hiring Mike Tisha, who has taken over my teaching responsibility this year as well. You can see Mike in the back there in his sweats because he's just such a really passionate health teacher. He was working out prior to coming here, so he really broke a good sweat just to be here tonight. And, you know, just to kind of talk and introduce Mike a little bit as well, he's come from a, from a family of, of teachers, and it's great seeing, he's a graduate of Southern Connecticut. And his father was a teacher, his sister's a teacher as well, too. So he's coming with, with all new inspired and new ideas as well, too. He takes credit for them, but I think his father's giving it to him at the dinner table. But we'll say that Mike's doing it as well. And he, he's really just, the way that I'm able to kind of observe health education being implemented now, too, through a different lens, and seeing it kind of executed, he's really bringing it to good life, which I appreciate it. And then there's other health committee members that are not here tonight that are still doing some ongoing work and support, and I just thank them for their ongoing efforts as well. If you remember or you recall, back when Jay and I gave a presentation back kind of last Thanksgiving or so around that time, we started with a slide to give you a vision of our New Canaan Public Schools Health Education Curriculum. And I kind of want to refresh our memory a little bit, just in terms of what that vision is. And, you know, we believe that the students of New Canaan Public Schools will be equipped with the skills necessary to improve their health literacy, fostering the capability of making informed decisions in order to lead a healthy lifestyle. There are two words there that are bolded, which are skills and health literacy. I'm going to talk a little bit about those pieces. But in terms of health education, we have national health education standards and skills, all beginning with what are our core concepts. What is it that we want students to know? As a result of that, and having that information of what we want students to know, we introduce what is basically representative of a comprehensive health education curriculum that promotes personal wellness, personal safety, and alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-free lifestyle, healthy eating, physical activity, mental and emotional health, violence prevention, and disease prevention. Then when we introduce over, over the course here of what we want students to be able to do, we can see that we have skills in our standards. And there are seven skills that we have. So we have the analyzing influences, working up through accessing valid and reliable information, interpersonal communication, how we can build upon decision-making skills and goal-setting skills, their self-management, their ability to practice these health-enhancing behaviors, and as well as their ability to advocate for their health as well, and the health of others. In turn, here, what we're trying to do is improve upon students' health literacy. And combined in with both the skills that we have, what we want students to know and be able to do in a comprehensive health education program, we know K-12 that this will produce and prepare students as critical thinkers and problem solvers, responsible and productive citizens, self-directed learners, and effective communicators. So kind of in a nutshell, if we were to think of it as more concrete, I was trying to think of a way that we can just use a nice kind of, kind of three words to kind of shape this all around. And it's, skills build health. And that's really what we need to be thinking about, and what we need to be sharing as well, is that the skills that the students are able to acquire is going to give them that, that utility in order to make those informed decisions to build that, that health literacy. Health literacy by definition is the ability to access, understand, appraise, apply, and advocate for health information and services in order to maintain or enhance one's health and the health of others. That definition comes from our national organization, Shape America, which is the Society of Health and Physical Educators. As we look at this, and what the research tells us as well, too, is that health-literate people are able to address their own health needs and the health of others, and they're able to obtain and apply knowledge and skills to enhance their own health and the health of others as well. In combination, we could also think of it as almost a formula, too, where we have our attitudes and our skills and our knowledge combined together that will overall produce positive health behavior that is in turn resulting in increased health literacy. So as basically an example that I'd like to share with you, when we came to you in November, we talked about, and we identified some of the gaps that we had in our curriculum, and some of the things that we saw that we needed to kind of work on. And that's some of the work that we've been doing since then. And there's been a student assessment that has been developed, and I'd like to share an example with you as well. A little background of this, this is a fifth-grade assessment that was done within their personal health unit. And they, if you recall, begin with the common sense ways to be healthy. And we think of that through the many different dimensions that we have of health as well. And students will become, as part of this assessment, they will become news anchors. And their mission here is actually to go ahead and access valid and reliable information pertaining to a common sense way to be healthy, so they could deliver that important and urgent news to the fourth-grade students. So as we look at this, we see that students have now become a news team. And they're actually going off and they're researching, and they're gathering that information through several days of lessons that, when we think of skills-based education, and we think of the practice that we want to implement there, we think that we need to first introduce it, we need to model it, we need to practice it, and we need to reinforce it. And then students have the ability to demonstrate it, right? So that's what we're looking for.
Hi, I'm Stacy.
And I'm Rebecca.
And we have urgent news.
Did you know that washing your hands is pretty much a medicine you could do for yourself?
Wow, I didn't know that. But guess what? We're going to tell you when to wash your hands.
And use an example.
One, after blowing your nose.
Two, before and after eating.
And three, after using the toilet. But there are many more.
Also, washing your hands prevents coughs, colds, and other illnesses by 16 to 20%.
It also prevents the number of people who get stomach bugs by 31%.
So kids, make sure to rinse.
Lather and scrub.
Use soap.
And dry.
And you can use this on your teeth.
All you gotta do is scrub, 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 and a dub-dub. Just wash your hands. All you gotta do is scrub, 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 and a dub-dub. Just wash your hands. Wash, baby, wash, baby. One, two, three, four. Wash, baby, wash, baby. One, two, three. Wash, baby, wash, baby. One, two. Wash, baby, wash, baby, wash.
So as you could see here, that students, when you listen to really what they're saying, they're really providing us with information, they're providing, providing us with data and statistics that they've actually gathered, that valid and reliable information. You hear that, you hear the importance of actually practicing that health-enhancing behavior. You hear reasons why, and then you see how they can actually do it as well. It's done in a very fun way. That was not their bathroom, that was in the classroom with a green screen that was actually behind them. And we've had, and have to give credit to also Mr. Petracopoulos, who is one of the tech integrators over at Saks Middle School that has helped us with that as well. This has now become an ongoing assessment that students are doing in fifth grade. They're really excited about it as well, and they're, they're really engaged in that process. As we think of, of health right now, there's, there's really no better time for health. And when you, when you kind of look around, or you look at the latest editions of Time Magazine, they're all centered around one central theme, which is health. The science of exercise, the 100 healthiest foods, the science of happiness, mindfulness, and the science of emotions. You know, I, I hear Dr. Letzey talk about as well, too, especially convocation and, and other areas within the happiness advantage that we see. And, you know, you, you find what you're looking for. And truly, if, if we continue to look for those, those positive messages that we see, and the ways that, that we're trying to find ways to be healthy and to live that healthy lifestyle as well, it is out there. It's right there in front of us as well. So just some of the things as well that I've been able to be a part of this year. I was able to kind of go to the Yale Center of Emotional Intelligence, with a team of other colleagues supporting the Saks team on a two-day training, which was a very valuable experience that we were able to, to attend. And in the science of emotions, Time Magazine, Mark Brackett, and the Yale Center is, is highlighted all throughout that article as well, too. And we were able to kind of come back and talk to staff a little bit about how we can start to work with this and, and use this as adults, and use this for ourselves as well, too, before even rolling this out with students. Another committee that Dr. Letzey and Dr. Cass are leading is the Employee Wellness Committee. And I've had the, the honor of being on that committee, and then working with a subcommittee with Dave Gussich and Kim Bean on kind of the, the branding, name and logo design that we would like to see in terms of our Employee Wellness Committee. So kind of with some other artistic credits that I'm going to show you here, too, that, that go along with some individuals that have experience in graphic design, so Jen Sinisky and Jean McDonough at the high school, and Clint McLeod at the middle school. We all have kind of really engaged in a big collaborative effort to kind of see our vision come to life, and it really couldn't have been done without their artistic talents that they had. So when we think of what we have come up with here, we think of Be Well. And we see the heart in the center kind of representing overall health and wellness, and the colors there that are representing all the different school colors around the district. So you see the, the blue for South and green for East and West, and the red kind of for the Saks and, and the high school, and the little shout-out for orange that you see. And the little phrase around it, caring for the whole employee while educating the child, educating the whole child, you know, through, through Dave, myself, and, and Kim, we really kind of threw so many ideas out there. And we went back and revised and so on, and, and we saw a, you know, I think this is like our ninth or our, our 10th one that actually came out. And we're excited about the work and the work ahead within that committee, too. So back to just a little bit about the next steps that we established from last year. So when we ended the presentation last year, we had some things that we wanted to continue to work on. So we wanted to begin drafting a scope and sequence K-12 with an emphasis on the K-4 units of study. We wanted to draft units with a focus on information gathered from last year, specifically to some of the gaps that we saw within personal safety, and ensuring also that all information related to our curriculum will be transparent to parents in the community. So as part of the update tonight, I really want to share with you some of the work that we've done to accomplish those next steps. We've made some shifts in our fifth-grade health curriculum within personal safety. I've been able to deliver a fifth-grade parent presentation, which I will talk to you about, where hosted the first of a parent-focused group geared towards elementary parents. And the elementary curriculum work is being developed through our committee with a focus on 3.5. So the goals that are being met, fifth-grade parent presentation was held over at South School. We offered a day and an evening session and gave an in-depth look at our fifth-grade health curriculum for parents. There was an excellent turnout. We had approximately over the two sessions, around 60 parents that turned out. And we, I was able to share that vision, that slide with them as well, too, to kind of share the, the ongoing work that we're doing. And I explained some of the shifts that are happening within our fifth-grade health curriculum. We were delivering right now two additional lessons within our personal safety unit, being co-taught by, by the school counselor and the health teacher. The units are focused around primarily healthy relationships, building that foundation that we're looking for within personal safety that is aligned with the sexual assault and abuse prevention and awareness mandate. Through this presentation, we made everything available to parents. We provided them with a parent letter. We gave them a link to actually look at the complete lesson plans that are provided there. We also, at the parent presentation, had out for them all the student materials that we were going to be utilizing in the class as well. Parents were able to ask questions, we were able to dive deep into it, we were able to have them kind of look through them and take home the lessons and the lesson plans with them as well, too. The purpose of these two lessons really are to help to further empower them and provide students with the necessary safety skills. In these two lessons, we continue to build upon the interpersonal communication skills that we're building upon within the personal safety unit in itself. And we identify in that lesson who their trusted adults are within their trusted circle. One of the primary components of a skills-based health education program is that it is easily or that it is adaptable. And what I can tell you is that a lot of the concepts that we'll see throughout, some of them might be highlighted at some points throughout the year that we'll see, but they can easily be intertwined and adapted through any of the skills that we're going to be teaching. So the concepts might change, or the importance of those concepts might change throughout life, but we know that the skills are static, and they stay there, and they're going to continue to, to stay there as well, too. The shift's in the way that we deliver fifth-grade health. We also discussed the, some changes that we made within our human growth and development lessons, puberty class. So you never actually think about when you are growing up that you're going to one day be teaching puberty class to fifth-grade students, and then start talking about it with parents at a parent house, and now to a board of ed. And, you know, dreams do come true, what can I say? So it's just the way it is. Really, what we've done between the three trimesters, what has been done in the past is that puberty class or human growth and, human growth and development was delivered at the end of the year in two lessons. We would see students where they would be separated between a girl class and a boy class, and they would be delivered two lessons ongoing throughout kind of May through June. So it was just kind of a, a running wheel of, of human growth and development that was kind of going on during the end of the year. And this year, we started to actually turn that into our trimester course. And now we're actually teaching it within the overall unit. And what we're finding is that, you know, the relationships that are being built with the teachers and the students, it's a much more valuable experience at this point in time with them. They're able to have more engaging conversation, they're able to see certain ways in terms of delivering that instructions when, too. We send out a letter to parents two weeks prior to those lessons actually taking place, so then parents can start to think about those great dinner table conversations that they're going to be having when students come home from the two lessons. We've reached out to a community organization, New Canaan Cares, and Executive Director Meg Domino, who I have a longstanding working relationship with, who's hosting several parent workshops as well, in terms of how to best communicate with your child through puberty and through this time in their life. She just held one of the first ones. So throughout each trimester, she's scheduled to deliver the So throughout each trimester, she's scheduled to deliver these. At the first one, she had about thirty to forty parents that showed up, which was a great turnout. I was able to come at the end of the session and answer any questions that parents may have had, talk to them about some of the materials, or just some of the content that we're teaching. And then, one of the things that Mike, Christina, and myself are working on now to have ready is a kind of content brochure, informational brochure, to give to parents as well, to kind of give them those talking points that they can have, because it's one of the feedback messages that I'm getting from parents, is something that they could use as just talking points as well, kind of to, kind of make them feel more confident in having that conversation. And lastly then too, we've had a parent focus group. So we reached out to many parents across fifth grade at the parent night, where they came, they were able to sign up if they would like to kind of volunteer for a focus group that we were holding. We reached out to all the elementary schools as well, in terms of trying to gather some parents. So many parents were, you know, kind of asked to see if they wanted to volunteer, and this has become kind of one of the first rounds of what we think will be many focus groups, because we got some insightful feedback from them. The first one we had, there were seven parents that attended, and we were looking for feedback on what they felt as parents were their importance of the skills and the concepts that kind of were introduced to them that day. And then, in terms of teaching it at a K-2 level or a three-five level, kind of where were they feeling on that, and what were maybe some of their concerns as well, in terms of developing that healthy lifestyle for their children. Kind of found that they felt all of it was important, so we, you know, took that information, and we knew that, you know, we want to reach out to other community members and other parents as well too, to kind of get a broader understanding of really what that feedback might look like. So then, one of the other areas that I was able to, or that I've been doing as well too, is elementary health education, right? We're focusing on that, we noticed a big gap within our elementary health ed area, and I've been able to start and observe classes first. So at the beginning of the year, I was going around to the three elementary schools, getting feedback from the physical education teachers and the classes that they have. I have been teaching middle school my whole career, actually, even prior to New Canaan, I was middle school health and phys ed teacher, and I have been absent from elementary school, right? So kind of going there and seeing the transitions that take place, how students have carpet time, and then they transition to the other tables as well too, was really an eye-opening experience for me, as we're trying to develop the best and most efficient health curriculum possible for our students. So actually, just sitting with elementary teachers and kind of picking their brain and hearing certain ways that they go about lessons, really kind of gave me some great ideas in terms of how we can start to formulate our lessons as well. You can see me here really quickly, I know I'm wearing a Batman t-shirt there, there's a quick story behind that. The first time that I went in to deliver the health lesson at South School, it was on Halloween. When I told the elementary teachers that it was on Halloween, they were like, "Oh, wow, you're brave, you're really brave," you know, "Halloween's big here, right? We kind of dress up," and so I was, okay, pressure's on, no problem. I, you know, had my Batman shirt and little trick-or-treat basket with, you know, like pencils and stuff, no candy, right? Health t-shirt, what am I going to do? And, you know, I walk in there on Monday on Halloween, and there are, no one's dressed up. And I'm looking around, I'm like, "Why isn't anyone dressed up?" And I walk into the office, and the secretary's telling me that, "Well, we celebrated it on Friday, everyone dressed up Friday." I was like, "My gosh." So I'm standing actually in the hallway, and this adorable young boy, he's, you know, he looks up at me, and he's standing in line there, and I'm kind of waiting to kind of figure out my way around the school, and he kind of just looks at me, and he's like, "Missed the memo." And I was like, "Oh, my gosh." So even in the class, you see all the kids are dressed up normally as well, you know, like they would, and it was one of those, "We did this Friday," you know, and it's like, "Wow." So, it was a great introduction on the first day going in there. It was still Halloween, so it was okay. But through observing these lessons, I was able to introduce a lesson with them, a foundational lesson of health, and really, health and wellness. So we look at it, we could look at it in two ways. I presented it to students in the triangle way, which is that we have three dimensions of health, our physical health, our mental and emotional health, and our social health. That triangle there is called the Penrose Triangle, it's a graphic design, or an optical illusion kind of, where you can see how all of them are intertwined with each other. The bottom blue one, it's kind of hard to see for me here, but that should say mental and emotional health, so the three areas there. And then, or you could think of it as a three-legged stool, where all three stools are holding that overall base of, you know, it's holding the base of support there to maintain that balance, right? And we're looking to maintain a health balance. So if there's a crack in the stool leg of mental, emotional health, the other ones aren't going to be as strong. If one of the legs isn't there, the stool will actually fall as well too. So we talk about all the important components, and how all of them relate to each other. When I got some feedback from students, and we talked about what is health, and the question was, "How healthy are you today, and what do you think of when you hear the word 'health.'" This is for first and third grade classes that I was able to go into, and they were really aware of their physical health. They were really aware of exercise and healthy eating, and I give full credit to our physical education staff at the elementary schools for their background information there, but also, obviously, what they're probably learning at home too. But when we started to talk a little bit deeper about mental and emotional health, or social health, they had some connections that they really weren't, you know, they were a little confused with. So one of the lessons were how they can take one of the components of health, physical, social, mental, emotional, kind of explain it through an illustration, and then identify which area that actual focus is on. You see students on the left there, they're looking really excited, that's how they actually reacted when I walked in the room, it was great, it was such a wonderful reaction. But actually, we took them through emotional health, and we took them through different emotions that they would experience. So we took them through kind of a, you know, a flash of emotion, so it was more or less excited, or happy, or sad, and they were facing someone, they had to see what that looked like, they had to see, and then kind of describe, well, what's the feeling that you have associated with that too? And then, how does that connect to our social health when we're feeling that way as well, when you're interacting with others? Some of the feedback I got from teachers, when I talked to them about health, I said, "Yeah, well, conflict resolution is a big part of health too, in terms of social health. How do we resolve conflict? How do we develop win-win situations?" And they were almost shocked, like, "That's health? We can do..." And they thought, like, teaching some of those things, integral parts, in ways that students can apply this out on the recess, in the classroom, when they might establish a little conflict at the table with each other too, how we can actually provide those skills for students at the elementary level. So some of our next steps that we have, and really what we're focusing on now with the work that we want to do for the remainder of the year. We want to continue to focus on our students, we want to continue to focus on the curriculum, the framework, developing those units of study that we have with our national standards and the committee that we're working with. And, you know, Melinda Graef, a great description and visual of the importance of Curriculum Leadership Council. I have the opportunity to take the work that I'm working on within our committee, and then bring it to that council and get their feedback. That feedback only enriches and livens our curriculum documents even more. So I'm excited to actually start to present to that council as well. Gathering more feedback from parents and teachers is some of the work that we're going to be doing. Elementary PE teachers as well too, we continuing to go into their classes and gaining their insight, still visiting the elementary schools throughout the year as well, and making sure that the first and third grade classes will be getting that lesson. And then also, we're just going to continue to work to make this curriculum work transparent for parents. So we really want to give them that opportunity. One of the things that I said to the parents at the fifth-grade presentation was that, you know, "This doesn't work for just us alone, we need to work together on this, this is an important topic, and we want your help within our work too." So, when we think of this now, I know you've seen this picture, which is the double rainbow that appeared over Saks, and Scott Chard, who you saw a video clip of as well at a faculty meeting, describes in detail what it takes for that to happen. He could describe it a lot better than I can. And all the right pieces, and all have to come together at the right time. And I can tell you that going back to right now within our curriculum work, that all the right pieces are in place, we have the momentum moving forward, and it's all happening at the right time. I'm excited about this work, and really grateful for the opportunity that I've had this year as well, and excited to provide you with more updates along the way. So I want to thank you again for coming to present to you tonight, and be happy to take some questions if you have any.
Thanks, Jonathan. I think I want to echo what you just said, it's all coming together at the right time. It seems like it sort of all, you know, comes full circle with the social-emotional work that we're doing in the district, so thank you for leading this effort for the district. I'd like to open it up to the board with any questions. Hazel?
I just wanted to ask if you could speak for a few minutes about, you mentioned about working with the faculty on health and making themselves feel better. And I think it's so important, because it's hard with the day, it's a long day, and to keep your energy going, and to keep those germs away so that you don't get sick. Just thinking about how much also the students to use the teachers as models, because certainly if they see that the teacher doesn't exercise, or then that indicates that they don't need to maybe also either, because they do follow what you're thinking, they worship you and want to do what you're doing. So the example said, but it's hard to fit it in, I just wondered how you were doing that, or what was happening.
Yeah, so, you know, some of the things too, role models are so important, right? Another piece that I have this year as well too, I'm the Saks faculty co-chair with Ben Young as well, and we think about ways too, and really, things are coming together at the right time. Within the Employee Wellness Committee, and within the Emotional Intelligence things that are happening also, we know that this work has to start with us so we can role model for our students, because we want to be those best role models. There are pockets throughout, I could speak for Saks as well as some areas of the high school, that adults are doing some work on their own grassroots-level things that are building upon their health and their wellness. We have little fitness clubs and basketball clubs that are actually taking place, that the adults participate in on their own. There's fitness challenges that a group of about twenty or so adults are actually doing too, that are basically just grassroots things that have actually developed. There are certain exercise classes that I know that are going to be taking place at the high school. So there's many things that the adults are actually starting to do, because we know that, just as an adult, right, we want to acquire as many of the skills that we possibly can with utility in order to just build upon our own health, right? I think we would want that for ourselves too. So, those things are happening, but with all these pieces coming together, I think we can even highlight them with even greater strength and really put them out there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny?
I'm just curious, when we're dealing with school safety, and we talk about intruders and things like that, we always talk about how important it is to just go through practices, where somebody actually has to say, you know, "So-and-so intruder on campus, let's have a lockdown." So some of the things that you're dealing with in the health curriculum, you know, touch upon those types of stranger danger, or things where students have to take a step, you know, might conceivably to protect themselves. So how much, I was just wondering how much sort of modeling, or practicing, or things like that you're building into the curriculum in different areas?
Yeah, it's a great question, and one of the things within the two new lessons that we've actually established are, it's a two-part lesson, and it starts with the people around me, and it's the individuals that they have that they have healthy relationships with. And they start by building that circle out from the inner side to the closest relationships they have, to maybe some people that are acquaintances. And it builds upon the second lesson in terms of their trusted circle. So it's the same diagram, but then it's two of those adults in their life that they can actually go to within their circle, or within the outside of that as well too. So knowing when, being in a situation that maybe you might be describing as well, they have those people they can identify with in order to actually kind of confide in as well, when maybe being put in an unsafe or risky situation. We encourage them to know, especially at the fifth-grade level, and really, any middle school or even high school level, to have those trusted adults that they can go to with confidence when being put in an unsafe or risky situation. And that's really giving them that confidence and that self-efficacy in order to do that, right? That's what we would want them to do.
Good. Katrina?
Thank you, this is, as a parent of three K to eight students, it's critically important, and the timing couldn't be better. I have a question around technology, and if there's been any consideration or discussion about looking at technology as it impacts health, both like, looking at it from a physical, mental, social, emotional. I have a new teenager, and today, interestingly, at her thirteen-year-old checkup, the pediatrician at the end of the visit said, you know, "There's mounting evidence." He actually referenced a few studies, and just gave her a little bit of an educational overview of how phone usage, social media, impacts sleep, impacts physical and mental health. So I think it's that five to eight, eighth grade, it's an important time, and it's something that we're starting to learn more about, how it's impacting their health. I'm curious what's being thought about in that.
I don't know if someone planted that question there, because I received an email this morning from one of the social studies teachers, and Mary Hannah, who's the social studies coordinator and also leading digital citizenship curriculum, one of the social studies teachers actually brought up that exact issue that you're mentioning, and really, certain ways, and Mary and I have already started conversations about how we can integrate some of those health concepts and skills within the way that it impacts their health when they use technology. So I can see that actually falling within possibly like digital citizenship framework, and then building upon. One of the things within health is that, you know, it's so important, is how well we can actually integrate these skills throughout all different contexts, so not just digital citizenship, but how well we can integrate these skills within ELA, or even within math, and so on and so forth. So kind of just seeing those pockets throughout. But you're right, it is an issue, and it's one that actually, we are actually having that conversation about.
Thank you. Brendan?
So I like what you're doing in terms of parent communication, but I'm also wondering whether we could communicate with the athletic organizations in town. Kids spend a ton of time with those organizations, and I think some do a better job than others at promoting the social and emotional elements of health. Obviously, they're, you know, from a physical standpoint, they, you know, tend to do a good job, but just inviting those organizations in to talk about these sorts of issues, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for that, and, you know, when we think about all the overall components that impact the whole child, right, you're talking about some of those components, and it's really having that conversation amongst many of them, so thanks, yeah.
Maria?
I know you said fifty parents came out to the meeting in advance of the, oh, I thought that's what you said, in advance of the Aaron's Law component of the health program, the sexual assault component?
You're talking about the parent presentation?
Yeah, the parent presentation.
So the parent presentation was really an overview of our fifth-grade curriculum, and the ways that we are aligning our work within that mandate as well too, was a piece of that. But it was really a big overview of the entire fifth-grade health curriculum, so they were able to, you know, see that full overview. And there was about, in between both, about fifty or sixty parents that showed up.
So for the sexual assault and awareness component, I know parents can opt out, is there a way to turn it so they opt in, like at other private schools, parents actually have to sign that their children will be even taking puberty, puberty class?
Right, so there's no opt-out provision for Human Growth and Development?
No, the Aaron's Law component.
Right, yeah, so there is that opt-out provision. We put it in the letter for parents as well too, that, you know, we encourage them to want to be a part of that educational experience. We've had great participation with it, and really, even through some of the focus groups that we're having, is that the feedback we're getting is that they find those very important, very important pieces of this health concept that needs to be delivered as well. So, right now, there's just the opt-out provision, I don't see an opt-in wording along that.
And at what point, I know this is probably in the weeds on the program, at what point do you turn the corner with that particular sexual assault and awareness, where students are not just talking about uncomfortable situations, but where it talks about domestic violence? At what grade do the students start learning about that?
So right now, we're starting the foundation, we're building a foundation, because we know that within fifth grade, it's their first health education experience that they're getting right now, without the, you know, the components that we see within their physical education program. And, so building the foundation right now, and also in the second lesson, we're starting with, you know, good touch versus bad touch, and some of those areas too. So as we're unfolding it, and we're seeing the developmental appropriateness of it, we could see those things as we're starting to tackling through that framework as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jonathan. As I said earlier, it's important work that you're doing, I mean, we see it in so many areas in our culture right now, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
They're going to have to come to every meeting.
I know.
We need a cheering section at every meeting.
Okay. Moving on to action items, the first item under action items is the South School Windows Project closeout, and if I could get a motion to approve the South School Windows Project as substantially complete as of June 8th, 2017. Second emotion, Brendan, second. Penny, I was hoping you'd second. Any discussion or...
I can just very briefly mention it, and if you have any questions, you're certainly welcome to ask. We've been talking for a while about the South School Windows Project, but at the end of last year, we did complete the project, and so this is, it's really more of a formality than anything, so that the Board of Education takes action to recognize the project as substantially complete. the project as substantially complete. This allows the project then to move into next phase with the state as they, they then I believe have a year to initiate an audit process if they're going to do so. It is part of the state reimbursement for the project. And it's a date and a time and a vote that is required for the paperwork prior to submission to the state as a substantially complete project. So that being said around this, it's, I do want to say that the South School Windows Project was a fantastic success. You know, again, the, the project came in on time, on budget, and really made an enormous difference over there at South School for all of our kids and our families. And I do want to thank Penny. She was very involved with the project from the start. Certainly Joanne was very involved. As soon as she got here, this was an ongoing project that she stepped right into and helped us with. And Jean also, Jean Goodman was very involved with the project along with some folks in the community, including Joe Palladino and some others. I don't know if I'm remembering everyone offhand. But it was an excellent project. It really made a big difference over there at South. And, you know, we're very proud of it. So that's a little information about the vote. So Saks Building Committee is not the only building committee in town. The South School Window Project was also, you know, something to be proud of here in New Canaan.
I want to just say that Joanne Rocco was an amazing committee member there on that building. And we were a little bit late in finishing that one, unfortunately, but on budget. And she was in terms of opening a school. So I want to thank again the parents and the students and the whole staff there for making that just a little bit of a bump and not more. And I actually, during the Saks project, have gone over to look at the South School Windows, thinking we will get there.
I'd just like to echo Dr. Lassie's thanks, Penny, and to Joanne and the whole South School community. I mean, I know it was a big, a big undertaking and wasn't always easy, but it, you know, it, the final product is excellent. And you're building quite a portfolio, Penny, here in town.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous? Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, we have our 2018-19 budget assumptions. Hard to believe, we're back in budget season again for a first read. If I could get a motion to approve as a first read, the 2018-19 budget assumptions. Brendan, second. Katrina? Thank you. We will, you know, let's have a little discussion about the assumptions.
I can just briefly hit a couple of changes or highlights if you'll, if that'll be helpful. And you're right, we are, while tonight kicks off our budget season here with the Board of Education and our conversations, we've actually been hard at work for, I guess, a little over a month in district, meeting with different buildings, having conversations, and doing our preliminary work in building the budget and preparing to bring it forward. Although, the longer I do this work, the more I come to realize that we're never really completed with a budget process. Because if you're not developing, you're implementing, you're reflecting, you're refining, and then you're developing again. So in the 12-month budget cycle, we're in our budget development stage. And the, the budget assumptions and related priorities are important documents, because they really do work to help us to operationalize the, the goals and objectives that the Board of Ed reviews as the district goals each year. It's an opportunity for us as an administrative team and across the district to, to look at our priorities, to look at our progress on those goals and objectives, and to consider the, the resource allocation needs in order for us to continue progressing in our work towards those goals. The, some of the assumptions are very specifically tied, and you'll see that. Some of them are a little more general around our practice. But all of them do relate to our resource needs and budget development process as we, as we prepare for the new year. So I will, I'll hit a couple of them as highlights. And I know there are, there are some over on the table if anyone is interested in following along. But you'll see that, for instance, Goal 1A, Roman numeral five, is just, is a slight addition. And the, much like our goals, many of these do carry through year by year because they are best practices, they are good work. And sometimes we either edit or we add some new ones based on new efforts that we have. So here, for, just as a, for instance, at the bottom it says, "And students who have successfully become proficient in a second language should be formally acknowledged." And that is really speaking specifically to Connecticut newly passing the SEAL of Bilinguality for students to meet a certain level of performance for second language proficiency. That SEAL is something that we'd like to make available to our students, but there'll be some resource allocation needs there that Lizette will talk more about when we do speak about the budget, both in the workshop and beyond. So that's a specifically related item to an initiative that we're looking at. On page two, there are some just changes of wording or what have you, but in C, Roman numeral three, we're looking at investing in best practices around school organization, including scheduling, school start times, library learning commons, extended learning opportunities, both again locally and nationwide, which will empower us to continue to make research-based decisions on behalf of our students, parents, staff, and community. So in there, that's a wider objective or priority in the document that has several of our district objectives, as you're aware. Down on the bottom of that, C7, read this one as well. It's, talks about efforts focused on the early identification of and support for students in need of intervention. And RTI provides a network of supporters, of supports to help ensure all students continually progress in meeting and/or exceeding their learning goals each year. These proactive efforts often result in cost savings or future cost avoidance by successfully providing general education interventions and supports to students who otherwise may have required costly or special education services in or out of district. So that priority here, we are talking about our response to intervention efforts, which you know has been a district goal and objective for a while. But it also opens the door for our conversation that we'll have at the workshop and beyond about an alternative learning program for our students that Darlene and her staff and team have been building a proposal for, along with Bill Higgin and the high school staff. We continue on to page three. Under Goal 3, as you'll recall, we had a visit from our tri-state consortium, a consultative visit, where they focused on the extent to which all students are cognitively engaged in rigorous and relevant learning. As a result of that visit, we anticipate early in the spring, if not before, we'll receive a report that'll have recommendations and commendations. So here, while we won't have the report in our budget development, we still would put something like that into our related priorities document, because we will be looking to put some resources towards whatever those recommendations may be, you know, in the future. Page four, the, at the top, we're adding on to Roman numeral two. It's about student and staff safety and best practices. We just added the phrase as, "Ongoing training and best practices in school safety, K-12." We added that because our CAB have been doing quite a bit of research around best practices in school safety. And if you'll recall, when Joanne and Steve were here sharing an update on CAB with us, they talked about the Alice training, some other information. So we are looking at bringing that training in-house next year. There's a cost associated with that. But we do believe it is important for all of our staff to be trained continuously in these best practices, as you know, and as they shared with us, the practices do evolve as different experiences happen. And so they are continually looking for what is the best and most current research, and then finding ways to implement that into our schools. And then at the bottom, as I recalled, and Jill and I, as we were working through this earlier, that one of our conversations during the district goal process was about energy efficiency. And so again, one of our priorities here is to identify and implement opportunities to reduce energy consumption through efficiencies, which is both fiscally prudent and environmentally responsible. So again, not a document that you would like me, like to sit there and have me read to you, but just wanted to hit some of the highlights and talk for a moment about sort of the usefulness of this document. It will guide us in our discussions and our development as we continue forward. The budget requests are connected very directly to these priorities. And certainly, I know it's something that's worth taking a look through, reading through, and then having more conversation about at an upcoming meeting. So, thank you for it.
Thank you, Dr. Lassie. So as this is just a first read, we don't need to take a vote on it. And we'll have our second read at the start of the budget workshop next week. But is there any other, I know we just received these, so, you know, we can, over the next, you know, if you have questions or comments, you could, you know, submit those to Dr. Lassie and myself and, you know, have them for the second read. But, yeah. Maria?
I just want to say, I know the, the two presentations today and the overview of the Curriculum Leadership Council are amazing. I think we have really great staff. They're professionals. They're like the dream team of educators. I think they're great. What I do think we need to add, and it is actually, I think we have to get the other side, a little counterbalance. So I would really like to see us add a district curriculum committee, like other districts have, which actually digs a little deeper behind the scenes. It is actually a law that boards have this committee, not the administration. So I think we need to explore where we can add that. And I think that has to be part of this. As we go forward in this economic climate, you know, we may need that counterbalance. We may need, you know, we represent the people who voted for us, and I think that's the place where we can bring that to the table instead of having it after the fact. So that is one thing I would like us to think about. And I will recommend, that would be one of my recommendations.
Brendan?
Yeah, I just, I think that we're frankly not all that qualified to actually do part of the curriculum development. I view us, our role is one of essentially oversight and, you know, guidance as opposed to, you know, a committee of a number of us actually trying to do the, the development of the curriculum. And I think a lot of times that can just bog things down and make it more difficult to, you know, do the work that the district needs to do.
I would like to repeat it.
Hazel? Sorry, that's okay. Go ahead. That's all right. If she wants to respond to that, then I can talk.
I just want to say, I don't want to write curriculum. I think it's a different role. And it is a law that districts, Board of Eds have a district curriculum committee. Not interested in writing curriculum, just doing what it says, which is review, review, recommend, develop, and approve. And, and the problem is, we don't actually approve a lot of things on the board. So that's the piece that's missing. We're a very supportive board, but there are, you know, there will come a time where you have to sort of have that check and balance. But it is in the law.
Okay, Hazel?
I think we've already had that spoken to us by lawyers that have said that we are, the way we are right now is following the law, both in intent and in wording. So I'm not qualified to describe.
No, it has been, it has been reviewed by our attorney. So it's a, it's a difference of opinion. It's, you know, you've expressed your opinion on this a few times, and, and it was reviewed by attorneys. So we are in compliance with, you know, the law as it states the way we are operating currently. And I think, you know, we've, we've brought this up a few times in, in, as a board and, and, you know, sort of, and we can always revisit it because that's what we do as a board. But currently, it's been, you know, discussed that the board is comfortable and the results that we have have borne that the way we're developing curriculum and implementing it through the district is, is showing up in, in student results and achievement. And so, you know, but we can always revisit it. So Penny?
Well, I'd just like to say, having seen a number of board committees come and go, that I actually think the review and the presentations, particularly the presentations that we got tonight are incredibly important. And as a board, we actually spent a lot of time where we didn't review as much curriculum. We spent a lot of time on our finances for a number of years. And I think the results of that effort by the board to do that have been appreciated by the community, and they were, they were, they were due. And in a sense, in a sort of a full cycle, we've gotten back to more curriculum presentations. And I think actually, if we delegate that responsibility, that task, that oversight to a smaller committee, we will actually lose something as a board. We will lose some ability of the nine of us sitting here asking questions, hearing each other's questions, you know, even, you know, particularly in areas where we disagree. I think that's important. So I'm not adverse to spending more time on this. I think this is incredibly important as a board, but I'm not, I don't think we need, in my experience, I don't think we need a committee on it. But I do think it's important for us as a board to understand, you know, where the curriculum is. And there are downsides to delegating things to a committee, which I don't think would help in this particular circumstance. So that's just, you know, my viewpoint.
Other comments or questions? Hazel?
I just wanted to go back on one of the things that I think on page five is really an important thing for us as we talk about the budget. The unfunded, funded, federal and state mandates are continuous challenge. And I think that's a really important thing for us to be all aware. And I think you've touched on it a little bit here too, that the expectations of all these things for us to pay for mean that we have to sacrifice other places. And I think it's good that we're standing up and saying that, make sure that what we're being asked to do is worthwhile and needed.
Any other questions? Penny?
I guess one, one of the areas I've gotten interested in this year, and I don't know if other people are, is our use of substitute teachers. And, you know, we have, I think, an incredibly strong curriculum. We have extremely talented teachers and administrators. I actually am not sure how much, you know, different students spend with substitute teachers, how it actually works out. I think there is some difficulty getting the best substitute teachers. And so it might not be, we have an incredibly full plate this year. So I just raise it as an issue that I certainly would be interested in seeing. And I think there would be some financial implications if we actually looked at pay rates for substitute teachers that we might want to consider as a board. So I would throw that out as an area that isn't here, but if other people were interested, we might look at.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else before we move on? And again, as I said, please, you know, over the next week, because we will have the second read next week, you know, get any more comments that you have to Dr. Lassie and myself, that'd be great. Okay? All right. Thank you. All right. All right. It doesn't look like there's anyone from the public that would like to make any comments, so we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lassie?
Great. Well, I am very pleased to announce again that tomorrow at 4 o'clock PM will be the Saks Open House slash Grand Opening. We will begin in the auditorium with brief presentations by some students showcasing the, the new auditorium and, and their skills and talents as well. So I think we have three presentations from students after a very brief welcoming remarks and faculty. And then for anyone who is able to attend, we also have some brief tours available. So we can see those, some of those wonderful STEM rooms that Jen was talking about, and, you know, the great work that was done both in the new wing and the renovations of the existing spaces for that, for the music folk. So everyone's invited. No one has to RSVP. And certainly welcome to join us there. It should be a fun afternoon. The, anything like that?
I think Spencer's actually going to help us with it, and Mike as well. So we're actually going to have some photographs taken at 3:30, not very many, from 3:30 to 3:45. They're going to be very fast. But any, any Board of Ed members who would like to be in that photograph, we'd love to have you. Any town council members who would like to come, town officials who worked on it, we would love to have you all come and be a part of the celebration. So please come a little bit early at 3:30. It'll be inside because we, the picture is because we hear it's going to be pouring rain.
Okay.
But we would love to have you present. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we mentioned, a week from tonight, on the 11th, we'll have our budget workshop, which is an opportunity for all of our cost center managers to come together and share some of their thinking in the budget development for next year. It's, it's not a time where we delve into the numbers, so to speak. It's really a concept conversation. But it gives us all a chance to share with the board some of our thinking, and more importantly, or equally important, to receive your feedback on, on that thinking and direction and things, where we're going. So we're looking forward to that very much. We will begin here at 6 o'clock. Our next regular meeting after that, after some conversation with the board, let you know, we're going to cancel that meeting on 12/18. That is a very hectic week for everyone. And we believe that we can be very productive in our workshop by holding a public session to begin where we can, hopefully we'll be ready for a second read on our budget assumptions, and then we'll go into the workshop. So as we looked at our So as we looked at our calendar, that was a, a meeting that we could, we could remove.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone.
Nobody's frowning, nobody's frowning about that. So that's good. So at our next official meeting, our next formal meeting, we will be looking at our 2019-20 school calendar, and again, the second reading of our budget assumptions. Our statement of accounts for November, we will do the first meeting of January instead. So instead of the 18th, because that's something we can't move up because of the process and everything else. So we'll do that, the first meeting of January, and then we'll do December Statement of Accounts, the second meeting of January. Does that work? Yes. Excellent. Great. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone. So if I could get a motion to adjourn? Penny, second. Hazel? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.